Good evening and welcome to the Village of Webster Board meeting, March 24th, 2022. And if you would all please stand for the pledge. Jerry, would you lead us? Very much, and seated. All right, this evening we begin with at least one presentation. First of all, we have Fried Matzak, our people who have done our audit for 2122, and they will be presenting to us this evening the results of that audit. So, welcome, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for having me. I'm Nicole Ryan. I'm going to pull up Fried Matzak. I believe I spoke with all of you last year, and we're going to change this. It's nice to see you all in person and not through a screen. As always, I took that for granted before, but I really appreciate it now. We did conduct the audit under generally accepted auditing standards for the year ending May 31st, 2021. I'm happy to say we were able to issue off the modified opinions. So that's over your governmental activities, business-type activities, each major fund and aggregate non-major fund information. So, an unmodified opinion is essentially a positive opinion saying that, based on our audit, we did not identify any material misstatements. Always a pleasure to work with the ladies. They did a great job, as always. There were no new standards that required implementation this year. So, from that perspective, finally a year we didn't have to add 10 pages to your financial statements of more note disclosures, or more heavy reading. Moving on, though, I'll go on to pages three and four if you have the statements in front of you. I'm not sure if some of you do, otherwise I can just talk about them overall. These were your government-wide financial statements. So, on your government-wide financial statements, that includes the governmental and business-type activities. So, that'll have the capital assets and long-term liabilities that you don't typically see if you were to request the internal reports or review the internal reports on a daily basis for the village. At the end of 2021, your capital assets for your governmental activities totaled 5.7 million, and for your business-type activities, they totaled 1.6 million. Your long-term liabilities totaled 3.5 million for governmental and 2.16 million for business-type. Your long-term liabilities would include your serial bonds payable, you had new installment purchase debt last year, compensated absences, post-employment benefits, as well as the net pension liability with the retirement system. So, all of those liabilities that you don't see as a liability on your typical internal reports are presented on these financial statements. The largest of those liabilities for the village is the post-employment benefit liability. It totaled 4.35 million at the end of 2021, which is actually a decrease from 2020. That was at 4.75 million. The liability is basically out of the village's control as far as value because it's determined based on an actuarial valuation and the retirement benefits that the village has continued to offer. The other big change for the positive was the net pension liability. So, your pension liability with the retirement system gets valued each year on March 31st. So, it'll be coming up again. Last year, for '21, we saw a significant drop in your proportionate share of that liability, going from 1.15 million to $4,000. And the reason for that large drop is because in 2020, March 31st was the very beginning of COVID, and so the stock markets did not like it. So, any investments in the retirement system were down. So, the retirement system was at about 86.4% funded in 2020. In 2021, with the large turnaround financially, we saw that go up quite a bit to the point where the plan was actually 99.95% funded, which is phenomenal compared to most of the country for retirement system plans. So, that was terrific to see. So, your proportionate share obviously went significantly down because the plan's liability overall went down. Any questions on that? At the end of the year, the governmental and business-type activities did have a deficit on restricted net position, but that's largely associated because you had that large post-employment benefit liability. So, that's a direct impact of that. The hard thing with the post-employment benefit liability is New York State doesn't provide any funding mechanism for you. You can't, you're not legally allowed to put that money into a trust to offset the future costs of that liability. So, you're required, under the GSB statements, to report that liability, but you can't set aside any funds. So, when it comes to those statements, it's a little offside for that purpose. Moving on to the fund basis financial statements, the general fund had a total fund balance at the end of the year of $2.2 million. Of that, $509,000 is considered non-spendable, and that was related to the general fund liability that the sewer fund had to owe the general fund at the end of the year. The remaining fund balance consisted of $372,000. That was set aside for capital and debt purposes. It's restricted. $453,000 was in assigned fund balance for the portion that you appropriated for the fiscal year '22 budget, as well as any encoverances. And that left $832,000 in your unassigned fund balance at the end of last year. Your revenues exceeded expenditures by $438,000 in '21. A large portion of that was your sales tax revenues last year. We're up about $181,000 from 2020. Another portion of that was the federal and state aid. Was up approximately $113,000. CHIPS was up from 2020. And you also had a CDVG that had been the community development block grant that was received in that year. You did present the budgetary comparison schedule as required supplementary information. That will be on page 35. And the actual expenditures in the general fund last year remained under the total budgeted appropriation by $918,000. The non-major funds, as we call them, are your capital projects and the parks and recreation fund. Your capital projects had basically one piece of activity, and that related to how we're required to present your installment purchase debt. So, the wheel loader, the capital lease essentially that you entered into in '21, gets shown in the capital projects fund. It's basically an in and an out. And the parks and rec fund was up to $190,000 for restricted fund balance at the end of the year, which is an increase of about $40,000 because there were no expenditures in that fund. So, that'll continue to build since it was unused. Onto the sewer fund. So, I'm going to do this in two separate ways, and I believe I did it for you last year, too. The first way will be as a business-type activity, which is how we report, present in your financial statements. And then I'll go over a couple of figures for you based on how it's presented internally, so when you're thinking about for budget purposes. The total deficit net position was $873,000 for the sewer fund at the end of the year with an unrestricted deficit of $1.6 million. So, that would factor in any post-employment benefit liability as such. The overall net position, though, did increase $134,000. So, your revenue exceeded your expenditures. There was an operating loss, though. So, when you compare your actual operating activities of that fund of $85,000 versus the operating loss of $55,000 in the previous year. The primary reasons for that was salaries and benefits were up $70,000. Contractual was down $13,000. And the offset, which is really your charges for services that you have in there, had increased only $30,000. So, that's why you sort of met up in that direction. On page 10 was the cash flow statement, which is presented and shows the overall net increase in cash for the sewer fund of $232,000 for the year. That's an improvement over 2020, which had a decrease of $12,000. So, it's up in the right direction cash-wise, for sure. The biggest concern, I would say, for the sewer fund is the same thing we've been talking about, and that's that $500,000 that's owed between the sewer and the general fund. As far as the sewer fund and how it's presented internally, the sewer fund had a deficit fund balance of $139,000 at the end of last year. That was compared to a deficit of $315,000 the year before. Revenues exceeded expenditures by $176,000 at the end of '21. But I will caution you that a portion of that $176 was $67,000 related to one-time federal aid. So, you kind of want to take that out when you factor how well it did that year. So, it's moving in the right direction, which is all you can try to do to get it back where you want it to be. Any questions on the sewer fund? The management report that we provided, it's called the Report to the Board. In there, we have required communications, which essentially summarizes our responsibilities over the audit. If there was any new statements that were required to be implemented, we noted it. On pages three and four in there, we identified significant estimates. So, this is, it's something that people tend to gloss over because it's just a bunch of verbiage. But it's important when you're trying to look at your financial statements and understand what's actual numbers, actual figures versus what's just been estimated. So, it's a good idea to take a look at that list just so you have that general understanding. Page five of the management report provides the summary of audit adjustments. So, those were the adjustments that we identified during the audit and reported on your behalf for your financial statements. We also provided the GSB statements that will be coming up in the next few years. So, those are important for the village to start reviewing for potential implementations, see if it even applies to the village. We tried to narrow it down a little bit for you and select ones that were of higher potential to be applicable to the village. In Exhibit A of the management report, that's where we identify the higher-level deficiencies that we need to bring to your attention. The first one is the material weakness that's associated with the sewer fund, which we've basically covered already. It's similar to last year. Basically, the figures are updated from last year's numbers. So, no real change there, other than continuing to try to address that issue. And then we also noted a control deficiency because of improper use of reserve funds. So, the debt reserve was used, was applied to certain debt payments. And we picked up on it during the audit and discussions with Marcia and identified that you can't just use that for just any debt payments. It has to be the debt that was initially issued and the excess proceeds that it relates to. So, we were able to remedy that for the financial statements. So, they're not, it's not misstated or anything in the financial statements. And then just continue as you go forward to just to make sure you have the proper approvals and resolutions so that you ensure that the excess proceeds are applied to the proper debt. And finally, Exhibit B is primarily the representation letter that includes the audit process. That's one side of our management. Pretty much everything for this year's audit. It was a pleasure working with the village all these years, and we really, really appreciate being able to service all of you and hopefully benefiting for the village. You know, it's, it's one of those things. You can do audits for private companies. There's a different emotional benefit, I think, to doing it for governments because it's more of an invested. We're not just doing it for you. We're doing it for your residents and allowing you that transparency. And I commend you for continuing to have an audit because not all villages do. And I do believe it's an important, it's an important thing to have. So, you know, on behalf of Laura and myself and our firm, I really do appreciate that you've allowed us to service the village all of these years.
Oh, we're gonna miss ya. I really, thanks for all your service, really.
Thank you for all of us.
And I appreciate the years that you guys have been working with us for the effort, and it's been a great working relationship. So, thank you.
And if anything does arise, we are still available for consulting purposes, phone calls. You know, if something does come up that you want other services, we can always discuss to see if it'll be something that we can assist with. So, don't hesitate to reach out. Take care. Enjoy the budget.
Okay, at this point, we're going to be, thank you, Nicole, and I think now Matt, too. So, Matt, we have you on in the agenda next for a presentation of some kind.
Thank you. This evening is another update regarding the project related to Xerox Rose. A grant opportunity is available from the federal government. It's a short-lived opportunity. The application is due three weeks from today. What you have in front of you is... Thank you, Matt Chadfield, Webster Economics Development Alliance. What you have in front of you today is an updated cost estimate for this project that we've been discussing probably not for the past two years. This update came from the engineers that the village hired in February, TY Lin, to conduct an update from cost estimates that we developed back in 2019. And what we have now is an updated cost. And I failed to realize that this table in front of you doesn't include the request that we're going to ask as part of this grant. So, the total project number that we have right now is roughly $10.6 million. The village has already been awarded $1.838 million from the state, which is roughly 17.4% of that $10.6 million. So, the maximum request that the village would be allowed for this upcoming grant application would be 20% of the overall, or 80%, excuse me, 80% of the overall project cost, which would be roughly $8,471,000. So, that's the request that we're going to put in to the federal government. Three years ago, we attempted to submit the application for this exact same grant program. And we got to the finish line and realized that, for some reason or another, we couldn't hit the submit button. It was very frustrating, but regardless, it's what happened. I've been working with the ladies in the front office for the past week and a half, and we have finally, we have an actual, we have status with the federal government such that we could submit a grant application on behalf of the village. So, we literally could hit the submit button. So, that's, that, all that backend stuff has been accomplished. And now it's just down to writing the grant. Some of the language is a little different, so it's not as the equivalent of dusting it off in 2019. We will need to do some additional verbiage, but it's not nearly as big a lift as it was the first time. So, before you, I'm here before you tonight to actually request that the board authorize the village to submit that grant application. The submission of the application itself doesn't bind the village to spending any money. Obviously, that would only happen once an award and a contract was then executed. That being said, we'll have to go in by April 14th, and there will need to be, however the authorization needs to happen. Maybe the board can authorize me to hit the submit button, or maybe prefer to authorize Marcia to hit the submit button. I do not believe the mayor will be here on 14th of April. Correct. So, we will need to authorize, most likely, the treasurer.
What did you say the grant amount was?
$8,471,000. So, there is a delta there. There's a local requirement that's going to be about 2.6%, $280,000. And that will be...
How do you get that? If you add $1.38 million plus $8.471...
1.838.
You talk too fast.
That's how he gets $8 million, don't you worry.
I don't have it yet. What we're getting.
That gives us $10,000, $10,309.
With another, with $280,000 left as the local match, which will be worked out with Xerox. So, that's the goal. Three weeks from today, we hit the submit button. Be working diligently between now and...
Isn't it always?
Yeah, I mean, we've known about this one for a little while, but we held off thinking we could get funding from another source, but that, that source was less likely. So, I figured... This is, this is a highly competitive grant program in the federal government. However, they award, they put $600 million more dollars into this program than they have in the past. So, it used to be there was $900 million across the country, and this year there's $1.6 billion available. And the minimum grant request is $5 million. But the maximum is $25. So, we do have support at the federal level from our representatives for the project. We will be writing letters of support on our behalf. I wouldn't say it's our last shot for money, but it's probably the last shot we have at the full, the full project. From there on, I think we would be moving forward in smaller pieces. Any questions? Jerry, you gotta, it looks like you have a question, just really...
No, no, no. I don't have a question. That's good. But the board is ready to go because it is an opportunity. You know, I don't hear a mic. What do you think at home? Do I need a mic?
Yeah.
The audience is saying I need a mic. The ones that are here to hear me.
How do you have a microphone on?
Called up. So, are there any...
So, the application goes in?
It's filed electronically. Yep.
Yeah, 14th of April.
14th of April. There's, the federal government makes it very, very difficult. Marcia and I realized how difficult. We needed three different email addresses and four different passwords, and it was, it was amazing. The fact that I had to schedule a meeting, and we had to sit down and work up a coffee to figure this out. We're two very bright people. And it took both of us to figure it out, but we got it.
We're glad we had both of you.
What does the expected...
I don't know when the award is. That's a good question. I need to do some digging on that, but it shouldn't be too long. I would imagine it would be by August. We would find out. We shall see.
So, since these streets aren't yet in the public domain, do you need, as part of this grant application, something from Xerox or something that says, yeah, we're gonna give the village the roads or something?
Yeah, we're gonna get, we're gonna get a letter of support from them. We already sort of have the MOU that was drafted back in 2019. We lean on that. But I will be getting a letter of support from them. We actually had a meeting in this room this morning with the county and the town regarding the project because it does overlap the, in some regards, it overlaps the boundary with the town. So, everybody's fully aware of the project, but we do need to have one more update call with Xerox, our friends there.
It is a bit of a head-scratcher. It's $10 million of public money to fix up these private roads. And Xerox is the most direct beneficiary of this whole thing. And their sort of participation and support has been lukewarm in the best...
They are currently the largest, they own 770 acres there, right? So, they own quite a bit of land. They have intended to sell off portions of that land, right? This project would hope to encourage additional sale of vacant assets so that we can continue to see more investment. But you're right. I see your line of attack here.
It's just unfortunate that it's not more of a collaborative effort. But it's like, you know, again, just as a member of the public, you know, why should we give $10 million to Xerox to help Xerox out?
Well, I would like to think that we're not, definitely not giving it to them.
Well, as it stands now, the roads are theirs. So, you know, fix up the roads. They're their roads.
The roads would be transferred into the public domain prior to a dollar being spent. That's, that's part of the, that's part of the caveat here is the village can't take dedication, the risk of dedication until we go over to funding.
But it would be nice to have some long-term plan that Xerox has. All right, now you got these nice new roads. How are you gonna, you know, what control do we have over how now everything gets developed? Right. They went and, they went and sold their biggest buildings without any input from the town or the village. They just didn't. And then they come to us and want it. We'll always help to make it all happen.
As private proprietors, I would expect them to, you know, not really involve the government. That being said, the village was awarded, previous, last, last year, was awarded $203,000 in planning funds that encompasses a big portion of that campus. So, the village will end up coming up with the vision for what it thinks that part of the campus should be. Xerox is graciously gonna bless us with their presence on that steering committee. They're gonna have members, membership on the steering committee and involvement. We just had an hour-long phone call with them a week or two ago, right? Not last, maybe last week?
Last week.
Last week. Yep. They're very much interested in being involved and being an active partner. And they also brought up the roads at that meeting. So, they're, they're interested.
Well, they sure are. They're the ones that are gonna benefit most directly from this, at least initially.
Initially, I don't doubt that. The, the long-term view is a 30- to 40-year lens is what we're really looking at here, unfortunately.
So, we don't spend any money anyways in front of this boarding if there's zippers or contractors of some sort that...
There is no harm at all, other than my hours.
Well, I know the village has self-insurance. But I'm just saying, the rest of that $10 million is a federal money. One way or another, it came out of all of our packets.
The goal of this particular grant program is to help facilitate transportation improvements that are especially with those that are in Brownfield here. So, the fact that it is an identified Brownfield gives us extra points in the score. I know we all wish they would just spend the money themselves, but it's patently clear that history doesn't speak that that's gonna happen.
Try to move that so that that application is in on April 14th.
We have to make the resolution for Marcia to sign it or push the budget.
Yep.
And at this point, I would make the motion that Marcia be designated as the person to sign anything that is related here to the... person to sign anything that is related here to the April fourteenth application.
It's the U.S. Department of Transportation.
The U.S. Department of Transportation.
I'll make that one.
Well, sir.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
At this time, I would open the floor to the public comment portion of our meeting. Anybody who would like to address the board, please come to the podium, say your name, and have to say.
Richard Walter, long, long, longtime resident of the village. As much as we in the public hate to agree with lawyers, tonight is a very good point, was brought up by the village attorney. For years, we've seen Xerox come in and do things in the village and town to have cost the taxpayers money. True, we've collected a lot of taxes over the years, but they've also run up our expenses by increasing the size of the village and town population and other things. Here we are, other companies in the town have left and had to pay to have their roads fixed before the town would take them over. Here we are, bailing out a multi-billion dollar company with federal money. I did hear somebody say something about it's federal money, it's not our money, but it is our money, it's a matter of which pocket we take it out of. This seems to be the trend in the last fifteen or twenty years in the federal government, is we pay for big business. A few years ago, Hickey Freeman almost moved out of the city, being paid to move out of the city by state to develop other land in another town. So the state was paying them to move from A to B. They did not leave because this was brought out. So I, I keep seeing these kind of trends, and I hope they do not continue. I know here in the village, there's not much we can do about it, but we seem to be bailing out big business. Xerox got into trouble, and here we are stepping up with a whole lot of federal funds to bail them out. Thank you.
Please state your address.
Twenty oh.
Thank you.
That's not recorded.
Right, if no one else, I thank you for your opinion, uh, comment. And we will move and close the public comment portion of the meeting and move that to scheduled business. First of all, we have the approval of the March tenth Village Board Meeting minutes. Chancellor goes over.
I wasn't here, but I wasn't even listed as absent, so that's, maybe that's good.
I did not.
Huh?
I did turn off there.
Well, you have, you have some trustee Valcain.
Well, not enough.
I'm neither present nor absent.
Yeah. I didn't want to bring that to anyone's attention.
Well, I'm sure they noticed I wasn't.
We didn't notice you then.
I did.
I did too. I'm not a player, so.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next we move to the village claims and warrants. They're all typically short, remember.
I just had a quick one, Jake, Tracy Doors, what was that for? Um, I have to see how much it was, because they came back to do one of the doors. There was a spring, that was broke. No, page?
Page one.
It's page one.
It was, no, that was at the sewer plant, and that was a new door opener for the Influent, it has to be explosion proof. So they got a new opener for there, and then there was some revolts that came with it.
Yeah, just clearly sensor box station, sensors and revolts.
Yeah.
I want to know where it was.
I got one.
It's a sewer.
Sewer?
No.
Does a nut and bolt cost sixty-four dollars?
I would expect there was more than one.
Jake, Jake, you don't have answers. Is it silver plated or gold plated or something?
That was fifty-one, forty-two, four-twenty, so that's snow operating maintenance of equipment, so I'm assuming that's a head bolt that's probably for the plow edges.
So it's a, you know, it's a some big giant nut and bolt?
No, it was always the little ones.
I can't believe this is what you're asking this guy.
And we could, I could look at the bill and see which one's there.
Well, no.
I'd like to see that.
If it was written in the plural, Carl probably wouldn't have any questions.
That's right.
If it said head bolts and lock nuts, but here it's singular, so.
That's why I questioned it.
It's like you bought one head bolt and one lock nut for sixty-four dollars.
Even if you went to Lowe's, it wouldn't be that expensive.
We have more, more money in this amount of paper in this packet than those bolts and slugs. Now, where are we?
Yeah, I will, I will find out, it might be, either it's a bolt for the plow edge, or it's for the wing itself. They bolt it above that, they're on.
Yeah, what's a goal of?
They have a goal? That was for, that's their good ones.
And I have another question, I'll tap it in.
All right.
How come we're using an Ontario, what is it, Napa Auto Parts? Oh, it's Webster, sorry. But here's Napa Auto Parts, Ontario. Why don't you just get it from Webster?
I didn't know what that was.
Yeah, it looks like it didn't have it. Sometimes we get things delivered from one or the other if they don't have it. I know very often, one in Ontario seems to have more stuff than one here, so.
I yield.
I got a question. How's the, hey, how, how are the night town dues calculated? There's such a weird amount, two thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars.
I know, I don't know.
Is that based on population or something?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can find out. I thought that too.
Is that the same last year, wasn't it a motion?
Yeah, I think so.
It's been the same for a number of years.
And couldn't you, couldn't you split a portion of that between sewer and annual general fund?
Yeah.
Not that you have to. Depends on who needs money, I guess. But it's just a weird number, two thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars.
When we do these bills, I think it checks out as well, like, we have managers that have approval limits and things, but unless it's out of the ordinary, like, why are we questioning a manager buying those bolts? You know? It's not like you see sixty-two pairs of, you know, sunluses at nine hundred dollars. How's you supposed to answer that?
I think it's a little bit of a question.
Yeah. What did you use about your, I don't think that's a question.
Period have a one nut and bolt for sixty-four dollars, that's why I question.
All right, does anybody else have any further questions?
Not.
I'd ask for approval for claiming warrants.
I'll make that one.
I'll second it.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a resolution to adopt the secret resolution for the village of Webster concerning the adoption of proposed local law number five, two thousand and twenty-two entitled a local law to clarify and amend the code of the village of Webster as it relates to the collection of refuse. Local law is not an action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act and otherwise precluded from environmental review under the environmental conservation law. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a resolution to adopt the proposed local law number five to amend the solid waste chapter of the Code of the Village of Webster as it relates to the question of refuse.
I'll make that one.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
That was one that we had a discussion on previously. Now we have a resolution to, for secret, 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 what? Resolution. The village of Webster Board of Trustees proposing the adoption of local law number four, entitled local law to amend and clarify chapter eighty-five of the Code of the Village of Webster entitled Noise. Proposed local law is not an action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act and is otherwise therefore precluded from environmental review under the environmental conservation law. Motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Following that, we have a resolution of the Village of Webster Board of Trustees to adopt the proposed local law number four of the, of two thousand and twenty-two of the Village of Webster entitled, quote, a local law to amend and clarify chapter eighty-five of the Code of the Village of Webster entitled Noise. Public hearing?
Well, sir.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Uh, we now have a resolution before us to set the public hearing on the tentative budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, physical year on April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven twenty P.M. This will be a budget hearing that will take place after the budget PowerPoint presentation. Looking for a resolution to, uh, hold the public hearing on Thursday, April fourteenth.
I like that motion. Well, sir.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
You at this time, be distributing to us the tentative budget of the Village of Webster Board.
She would. Marcia, can you hand me mine?
There's no reason to go on that. I can't believe you're here with that.
You just worry about this.
Well, this is, uh, this is the budget that will be proposed. This is the budget that will appear in the paper, I believe, right? That is not in this year, but next week. We have that between us. There are notes that are to the side, which are similar to those notes that we looked at as we were working through the budget meeting.
I may.
And we will turn this over for any more comment on this to our treasurer. Marcia, if you want to comment further on either one of the sewer or general.
Yes, I would love to, thank you there. You're welcome. I sent out an email, but it was fairly late this afternoon. I don't know if any of you have a chance to see it.
I did.
Okay. So I will summarize. All the changes are highlighted in orange from the last workshop. In the sewer fund, let's see, we go line by line. G D forty-eighty-nine zero one zero for the federal aid for ARPA. That was changed to zero because I reworked things so that we are spending that share of money during this budget year, not next year. So it didn't go anywhere, we're just doing it now. Okay, then the three one hundred lines just had minor adjustments to match the payroll chart that Joe put together. I'm not sure how we came up with slightly different numbers, but there we are. I've increased the contingency line quite a bit, and I'll just read my email. This is one way to grow the fund balance, since there isn't a budget line for growth fund balance with this. We put it in contingency, ideally, don't touch it, and then whatever is left there will roll into the fund balance for next year.
Yep.
So far, so good, everybody? Okay. Next, we have the flush truck. First workshop, I forgot to include it, second workshop, I put it on, and now it's been removed again because we had the option to have the first lease payment due in July of two thousand and twenty-three. So I just took the option, we pushed it out another year. So it's off the budget for this year. And then the last piece was, the very last line, transferred to reserves, that was cut in half to give us some more flexibility in terms of, we want to build up the fund balance before we sequester that money in a reserve fund. Any questions on the sewer fund? General revenue on the second page. The only change is that I removed the appropriated reserves. We will not need to draw from the reserve account next year. Okay, and then on the expenditure side, a thirteen twenty-five one hundred, that's the office staffing line. I, that's another Joe payroll check adjustment. Yeah. And then down at the bottom of that page, the contingency line, nineteen ninety-four hundred. I bumped that up for the same reason that I bumped the sewer contingency line. We want that fund balance to grow as well.
Which we learned from three, last year, that we can do that.
Yeah. Yeah. Handy to handy. Okay, and then all the rest of the changes, the parks and rec equipment line and the reserves on the last page, all of those are the last version of the budget. Let's see, let me point you to that first. A ninety-nine oh one nine hundred interfund transfers out. At our last workshop, I had two hundred ninety thousand six hundred fifteen on that line. That is our year-two ARPA revenue. So what I've done is to redistribute that. So I took it out of interfund transfers and just put it more specifically. And I just kind of arbitrarily divvied it up based on our conversations at the last workshop. You can always change it, but I split it all out.
Wait, so if it was two hundred ninety thousand, then you just split up eighty thousand out of the two hundred ninety thousand.
Plus the parks and rec fifty on the previous page. And the contingency line I bumped up from the balance. Yeah.
So there's a hundred ninety thousand dollars sitting on the Parks and Rec trust fund. So is any consideration made to pay for some of these park improvements out of debt instead of out of revenue?
The board has expressed no indication that they wish to do that.
So believe it or not.
So wait, they didn't say one way or the other?
We were talking the last workshop. Were you at the last workshop?
He was at the last workshop.
Okay, we were talking about what could be done in the parks, but it didn't go any farther than that. But I did, I put some of the ARPA money on that line because that was, the parks were part of the ARPA conversation, what we could potentially do with those funds. Oh, speaking of that, we also at the workshop last time, we had talked about premium pay. I put, that would come out of contingency if you decide to do that. We didn't have an appropriate line for it, so it's in the contingency. Heather and I did our homework, and no other local governments that we talked to are applying any of their money that way. So food for thought. We've got plenty of time to make that call. Any comments or questions? Is everyone satisfied with the budget as it stands?
Smooth.
I think it's good.
Nice.
But one other, when you go to publish it, I just noticed there's no tax rate, proposed tax rate, there's no proposed sewer rate.
Yeah, there was.
The sewer rate is, yes.
Or it's not on these handouts.
Yes, sir. It is, yeah.
Go to the top page, run for the blue, right? See how they write the blue.
Another issue general.
Oh, you're right, though. I have the, I have the property tax rate in the notes, and I didn't print that out.
I didn't see the tax rate.
The tax rate is two point two two.
My point is simple. Daryl said, this is what you're going to publish it in the Webster Herald when you publish it in the Herald.
When it's published in the Herald, it'll be in the appropriate format.
We didn't want to provide the format that goes to the Herald to the board because it's not as clear as this.
It's not as detailed.
That's where all the four hundred are going to be.
Do we ever think it would be two point two, two dollars?
Two point, or two dollars and twenty-four point four cents.
Thanks, John, Marsha.
Thank you.
Right, well, this will be, this will be published in the Herald. A little bit different format of the Herald. It's by the Herald, next week. It'll be presented to the public in color.
The Herald course.
I'll send out the first.
The first, but we have three weeks until the next year, is that correct?
Yes.
So it'll not be next week. It'll be the week after.
Correct.
The week out from.
Which I guess there's nothing wrong with me sending it next week, but I was going to send it first, so that it's not too far out.
Well, that's all right. Finally. All right, we will move on. Thank you, Marsha. You'll be back for budget, well, maybe not. Next, we have a resolution to set a public hearing on proposed law number six of 2022, which is entitled Local Law to Amend Certain Provisions of the Village Code to Ban Smoking in Village Parks and in Village-Owned Buildings. And this is for April 14, 2022 at 7:25 p.m. So this is a resolution of the Village of Webster Board of Trustees to schedule a public hearing to consider that proposed law to amend the code for the, of the Village of Webster by the addition of two sections to prohibit smoking in village parks and to limit smoking elsewhere in and around village-owned property. So we have a motion, we will set this up to have a public hearing on this proposed law, April 14. Notice of the public hearing. The local law should be titled Smoking Ban Within Village Parks and Village-Owned Buildings. And it is chapter ninety of the Code of the Village of Webster amended by the addition of article two titled Smoking Within Village Parks as follows. Article two, smoking within the village park prohibits smoking within village park. No person shall engage in the act of smoking within any village park. For the purposes of this article, smoking means inhaling, exhaling, burning, or carrying any lighted or heating tobacco product, any plant or synthetic product intended for inhalation in any manner or in any form.
So they use the Parks and Rec money to get on the side, that additional signage that's needed, do you think so?
I think Parks and Rec money is for capital improvements and not about the side.
The side just could be capital here.
But I don't know if it would have the probable useful, or carry probable usefulness or usefulness of a capital improvement requires. I think they'd be going to be for a certain amount of time.
I appreciate, I just appreciate over so many years of total, at least five thousand a year. All right, just wondering, as you're obviously, we're making this a law, you should, you should know what you're doing.
Well, I would ask, how long have signs been up for public parking in the village? They've been up for quite a while, I suppose, without changing them, have they not?
Yes, for the parking laws?
All along, yeah, in the village. Whether they're put up by the state or by, put up by us, I don't see us doing that. I really, I don't remember changing within the tenure that I've been on the board, so.
We did put up some new parking signs recently on West Main Street.
New ones?
Yes.
Of ones that have existed. I don't know if you've changed them.
No, just to only clarify early, some of those were.
If you have older signs, that could be a capital project.
Yeah.
All your old signs.
Not out of the parking rec fund?
Correct. Just the capital piece.
Well, if it was associated with the parks, you can't put no parking signs on residential streets and take that money out of the Parks and Rec.
I got you. We're on the same page.
Yeah, we are, yes.
Was just defining, how it's defining the capital.
So how many, how many village parks have there? Five? Five? So two signs per park, maybe, but you got ten signs. How much is that going to cost?
Thirty-seven dollars.
So sixty-four dollars. That's for another hole.
I have to look up and see what they are. I mean, if we're going to get a standard site, probably it says no parking and no smoking in that.
So what do you think, five hundred dollars for ten signs? And you want to take that out of the capital thing?
No, I asked him if we could, and then he talked about going to have a certain thing that'd be capital, so I was talking about capital, not about Parks and Rec, about capital. We want to do capital project of the signs that would make sense. Nothing to do with Parks and Rec, he wasn't in. Went to the capital criteria conversation. So between this and the Nussel Bolt site, we're wasting a lot of necessary conversation.
So I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Of a public hearing on the proposed local law.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Valpene?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
So there shall be a public hearing on the scheduled four, April 14. Next, we have authorization, a resolution to authorize the major times or lease agreement for the flush truck. Are we still pursuing that as we?
Again, later this, later this afternoon, I sent out an email to everyone in that chain. I heard back from Donigan that if we bonded that, we would probably save about fourteen thousand in interest. However, the cost to, for attorneys and E P D's fees and everything would pretty much wipe that out. So financially speaking, I think we might as well just do the lease. It's easier and it's not more expensive.
I believe this would be over four year, five year?
It's a five-year lease.
Have a lease to own?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think we pay a dollar at the end of the lease.
You can own it in three hundred years.
And these payments are approximately eighty-two thousand five hundred and four dollars and sixteen cents a year. I think it's, it's wise, so no benefit to go the other way, so I would like to approve it. I'll ask for a motion to.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Valpene?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, now, we have budget modification. Oh, yes. Did you go through some of this stuff that they want for the lease? There's something, Daryl's got a sign that's got all these questions that weren't answered or filled out. Somebody's got to do that for him twice. You know, there's this, they got him signing this Exhibit H, less these certificates. During the term of the lease, the equipment will use for central government, government functions, such functions are, and then it's blank. So somebody's got to fill that out. You're not in your head, you're going to take, you know, then it talks about. In general, escrow letter, we have the leasing payment instructions. Exhibit H. There's a notice of assignment, letter of direction, leasing certificate, assessment or agreement to provide insurance, paid qualified prior. Certificate, leasing resolution.
You're going to have to come in at six tomorrow soon.
That's right. Oh, I don't have to do this. Legal counsel, the opinion of counsel. I mean, that's the schedule of payments. Pardon me? Pardon? I didn't hear what you just said. Oh, I said, the opinion of counsel. You mentioned something right after that. And then after that, I had schedule of payments with me. And Exhibit A, description of the equipment, a lease agreement. So there's another page. So that's just a document itself on the lease, so I have a number of things.
So, so, so Don, you've gone through this yourself, is what you're saying?
See, no, I went, I went through it.
Because I think, like I said before, I don't think we should go down something because we don't have the proper time.
I do want to think again because working that one way in terms of, well, it wasn't straight this or what we had the other way. No, I went through the lease and looked at it, and it's, you know. Daryl's putting up his children's way out, and it's.
Done.
It's, you know, fairly standard, although this one, it sounds like the village actually is going to have title to the truck even before the lease gets paid off. But it says in here, if you don't make a payment, they can come and snag it. So, you know, how they do that, they say we're going to find, file a U C C financing statement. If you get a title, because it's on a regular truck chase, right? They should, they should file a lien with the Department of Motor Vehicles so it shows up right on the title. That's their problem, I guess. Because in here, it does talk about the titles, the village is going to take title, which is different than most leases, because usually you don't take title until the tail end of the lease. But that's apparently the way they're doing it. So I have in front of the board a resolution to authorize me to sign this lease agreement.
Yeah, we already voted.
You confused me, but whatever.
I'm not going to question.
Yeah, after we've voted, we question the catch track.
What did the gentleman in there, we're done.
We're done. All right, next, we have general budget modifications. We have a number of them for general. We have from Computer Hardware Software Maintenance and Support, eight hundred eighty dollars, and it looks like it's going to a different line, from one thirty-five twenty-five four oh six to thirty-six twenty four oh six, Computer Hardware Software Maintenance and Support, eight hundred eighty dollars. And then we have adjustments, anticipated expenditures based on year-to-date activities. And we have a number of things coming out of contingency. We'd like you to look down through them all to do that. Contingency, Veterans Day, Jazz Stop Collection Inspector, contractual expense, seminars, education, grant application fees, passport, postage, and records management. And that total, and actually you don't have it, but those monies are going to then janitorial supplies, insurance, gas, and then diesel fuel, tools, streetlights, contractual facility with. And, uh, that total, and actually you don't have it, but those monies are going to then janitorial supplies, insurance, gas, and then diesel fuel, tools, streetlights, contractual facility repairs, meeting broadcast, operation of maintenance, uh, and maintenance of equipment of vehicles or vehicles, and social security in general. So, it should balance out.
I'll get him in a moment. No, I certainly don't. I just don't wanna give anyone any theory or... Pressure's on.
Twenty-two thousand nine dollars ninety-four cents.
You're the teacher.
Yeah, science.
There's math and science.
Yeah, that's true.
Wait, what did you say it was?
I don't know. I had twenty-two thousand nine dollars ninety-four cents. Oh, ninety-four cents. I don't know if it was more.
Okay, twenty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty.
You have to talk to them. So, what was that?
Why don't we just total it up on this? We have it on the next one.
I'll do it again while you're going over the next one, just to make sure.
Okay. And then we have sewer. We'll do those together. Sewer, uh, fund budget modifications. Again, we have two, uh, modifications. One, uh, from four oh eighty-nine point zero one zero, federal aid, the asset money. Sixty-nine fifty, nine thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars. Two, uh, eighty-one thirty-two point two hundred, sewage treatment equipment. And then we have to adjust anticipated expenditures based on year-to-date activity. We have from the unassigned fund balance of sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. And that should equal the total of the following: preventative tank maintenance, the legal costs, computer hardware and software, sanitary sewer system personnel, other, sludge hawling landfill, operation, maintenance of equipment or vehicles, ferrochloride, insurance, contingency, total costs, seminars, uh, and retirement.
It's town costs.
Town costs, yes. And that should total up sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars.
I have the, the total for the general fund budget mod, the big one, is twen- it's twenty-one thousand, ten dollars. And I would like to add, in the larger of the sewer fund budget mods, that first time I pulled it from unassigned fund balance. Having to do that is what triggered my rearrangement of the ARPA funds, cause we don't wanna be taking out of a negative fund balance. So, next time, you will see a budget mod, putting it back into fund balance and doing a few other things.
I was saying, I thought the sewer fund had a negative fund balance.
Yeah. Not for long. Yes, so I'm reversing that.
When they make jokes about lawyers, we're gonna catch them. You know, they take, they take some negative money and later on, they're gonna make it positive. Making it positive first and then...
They have two negatives, that's the problem.
I'm gonna curb an oxygen detector in here.
I think we need approval. Maybe we do.
Yeah, I think we should adjourn.
And we have budget to actual report, so you can read that over with your vision. All right, we'll move to attorney. Oh, you need to vote, you can write that. Then I would ask for motion to approve both budget modifications, the one for sewer and the one for the general fund.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Uh, you have information on the budget to actual report, currently as to where we are, year-to-date, when we compare it over actual meetings, and it's like we are approaching a number of things a hundred percent. And some we are over significant, we in sewer, so I have to look back to, uh, hold it in my cabinet. All right, at this point, we move now to Don. Do you have anything for us?
No, not really. I thought what on the agenda was an authorization to have the mayor sign this amendment to the Ho-Jack Trail license, but I don't see it on the...
I wasn't sure if you had a chance to really go through it, if there were still questions, but we can absolutely do that if you're good with it. I know Jake said you were.
All it's doing is extending the Ho-Jack Trail use for another ten years.
It's not my department.
I believe there would be...
So, it's only one page. It's a simple little thing.
We're motorized.
By motor, no motorized. Yeah, that's... They never allow them to motorize on it. Again, it's sometimes, it's sometimes difficult to keep snowmobiles on it in the winter. That's a matter of caution.
Snowmobile police.
The buggy snowmobile, of course. Actually, the Town and Webster Police Department has a snowmobile.
Oh, good.
They were supposed to be enforcing it both on the Ho-Jack Trail and on the one on four bike trip. Whether that actually happens or not is another question, but it should have cost.
We can do it.
But is, you know, um, since it is, um, you know, it's best that Daryl's on it, while he's here, do it this week instead of in April when, when he's gone. It's simply to extend the term. And while I was looking at this, I looked at the original, um, license agreement. Plus, it came up because of the, there's a, it's gonna come before this board, the, um, Downman Street Selects business part of it, which is gonna be rated adjacent to the Ho-Jack Trail. But anyway, so I looked at it and, um, there's a provision in there that the village is supposed to carry liability insurance and name R G N as an additional insurer. Have, you should double check and make sure that, that that's done. Cause I don't know if, you know, there should be something, cause it's not technically village-owned, but village has the rights to use it. To make sure it's covered under the village's, um, general commercial liability policy. And that R G N is a named beneficiary, cause I know there was, didn't involve the village, but a couple of years ago, there was a gentleman that was killed crossing Hope Road using the Ho-Jack Trail. And he erroneously sued the village, it should've been the town, but, um, you gotta make sure in case a similar accident happens with somebody crossing, you know, North Avenue or, you know...
Is that something that's included every year, or is that just with our...
It's just part of the general policy. If we need a special rider, it might be covered already, you know, cause the original license agreement was back in twenty-twelve. So, it should've been in place since twenty-twelve, and I, we should just double check to make sure it is.
Okay, no problem.
Since you were, you, he was gonna come in to talk about...
Yeah, he did.
Okay.
Yep. So, he's great. Well, I'll email him tomorrow.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
So, we should move to, why don't we decide?
Did you take a vote?
I'm not yet.
Does everybody have this? Oh, you didn't hand it out?
No.
It's only...
I didn't expect it, I'm sorry.
It's only three parameters. So, extend the term for ten years, and they clarify that there's no motorized vehicles that are supposed to be, to use the Ho-Jack Trail. So, it's pretty simple.
Not smoking and... It's limited for ten years, I'm here, I'm here, old motorized.
But the ten, the ten years is up this year, so it's easy to get, it's an easy to send.
I'll make sure everybody gets a copy of it. I'll scan it tomorrow.
It's only a one-page stack.
Yeah, it's...
It's pretty simple.
All right. I'll make that motion.
I don't think he asked yet.
I'm taking a bow by the horse, Nick.
He did. Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And we'll record, I'll be in another telephone.
Going forward then.
Here we go.
Good evening. I actually added on to mine, so I apologize. I gotta try and read my... Total six permits, eleven complaints, um, legal, we're still working on some, uh, local laws that we're gonna be changing, so we have several more coming to you. Certificate box, certificate box contains one, she even won't close out. Uh, still working on all permits, Frank Wood subdivision, still weather permitting, they're just about done, so we should hopefully wrap that up in the next couple of months. Greenberry Crossing, we're working on their site. As you can see, there's several buildings going up right now. They were just at the Z B A meeting, um, this past Tuesday for the approval of Phase Two, which was approved, um, pending some changes that, you know, still have to be submitted. One for a sidewalk that we actually took care of today already, um, for the design of that, and then just some, uh, clerical stuff that Jake pointed out and other stuff I pointed out. Country Manor, um, again, that's time or weather permitting, but I've actually been receiving several new complaints about down there. Some of the stuff we have no control over, they're raising the rents five hundred dollars, according to what it was, so there's a lot of people not happy down there. But, uh, again, we have no control over, um, just the violations. Citizens Bank is completed. Other than signage, they are back open and thankless, they're over there, doing a good job. Able to close out several violations, complaints, still working on several more, some additional stuff I added on. Jake and I completed our annual state conference last week, I believe, so we are all set till next year. Lot of permits with the last week reduced, or, you know, since the season, we're starting to pick back up again. Also, the state report has been completed and is all set for going forward to vote. I think that's all I have.
Nice job, Aaron.
One question, Jake, you could probably elaborate more on this, is, uh, I was getting asked this, uh, the old McDonald's are, that's the fireman's building, right?
Why can't, why, I, I thought that a restaurant could go in there for ten years, I heard, but if you can elaborate on it, why we can't rent that or...
I believe it's a dangerous thing for us twenty-five years, and it's not just a restaurant that's selling any food, so somebody opened up a, a bookstore there and, and candy bars at the, at the counter, and according to their deed restrictions, they can't sell anything, any food product or anything there, so I think that obviously limits the number of people that wanna get in there. I don't know how long's left on it, um, but that's one of the things I think that Aaron was ta- talking about as far as enforcement there. Although somebody, I've been calling in, um, they received, uh, they just kind of playing phone tag right now. Um, the vendor's son is the leasing agent for that property or the manager, um, they're allowing somebody to dump snow in the parking lot in the wintertime, um, so we might go over that with them. It looks like somebody that they had helping snow, had dump trucks that were full of construction debris or something else, cause when the snow melted, all the, all the bags and the... So, we're making sure that they get that cleaned up and sweep up the parking lot. It's pretty, pretty nasty looking, um, it's more than they're in house.
That's absurd.
But yeah, I think it was twenty-five years. I think it's still owned by the same, well, I don't know, no, it's, uh, Berkshire, First Berkshire Trust or something like that, is the owner of the building. But it was owned, you know, the same people that built the new McDonald's, um, they're close to the old one, they're, um, owned it for a period, a long period of time. And they just wouldn't let anybody else, they didn't wanna build, I'm assuming it's some McDonald's corporate thing, and they don't wanna have a competitor that close, so.
That burger king in the same parking lot, pretty much. Across the street.
And where they can control it, where they own the building, and maybe the other ones they might lease or something, I don't know.
Probably somebody else doesn't wanna go in there.
Yeah, it's too bad.
Food store or something or...
I know.
It's too bad, Sydney.
I've had several calls on it, um, so that's how I actually learned about the restrictions on it. I, I, if I remember correctly, I think it's less than five years they have left on it.
Is that because I, yeah, that's what I was trying to...
Yeah, I believe it's less than five years. I was gonna say two and four, but obviously less than five, which is...
Yeah, I thought it was twenty, twenty-five years.
Oh, I don't...
That's way back, that's what I...
Yeah, I believe so, I've met some of all the different people and places.
Can you... Could they change hands, could they new...
I was wondering that myself, to be absolute.
I think...
Cause even the old markets...
That's a purpose of the deed restriction, so you can limit what somebody else can do with it.
Yeah, you have to go back to the owner that put the deed restriction in there the first place. And that, that person or entity could abolish the restriction if they wanted to. So, if it's the people that own the, the McDonald's on Hope Road, if you got, you know, if somebody wants to put some food thing in there, and they are the previous owners, they can go down there and say, "Look, are you willing to, I'm not putting in another McDonald's, I'm putting in a..."
It's a white pass.
"Another pizza chef that we desperately need." And, uh, will you extinguish the restriction? They could do it, yeah.
But they're the only ones that...
Yeah, they can live this, but it's up to them to do it, or they're gonna buy out or whatever, the case may be, that might be. Cause I, cause even when the plaza across the street sold, I was interested in purchasing that too, um, that, that's, uh, horrible, cause that plaza just sold as well. It's seen advertised in, in, like, the... It was, it was, yeah. Sold fairly quick.
Thank you. Uh, Jake?
Thank everybody who's feeling my thunder today, but Aaron mentioned a couple more local laws, just a little more specific. You know, um, there's one on the zoning changes to the zoning, and a very slight land review from controlled site use that we're working on that, um, that we're meeting the zoning board for, for their comments pretty quick. There's another one that Don doesn't know about yet, um, regarding the, um, building code, building inspector, and it basically part, uh, or chapter thirty of our code, and they made some changes to, um, I think in the executive law and in the code. They consolidate rules and regulations, a lot of that, that now require we have to do by December. And this is, yeah, this is the stuff we have to go through, uh, to look at those changes to, to our, I think our, just, I think it's just chapter thirty, but it might be forty-six too, where the fire prevention one, but it's built in the fire department. Um, we have to go through and incorporate...
look at, you know, the former, the original plan was adjusted the other one, so. Oh, and I did an update, the bills, I, hopefully if my mic's on, sometimes when people ask me questions about bills, I go out and shout to her or something like that. But honestly, it's not a bad, I appreciate everything, not bad questions, it's how we, it's learning what the heck we doing and most of the time it's, it's good stuff. So, we're happy to answer. And I just got, Lancy must be watching, I, Lancy, gave me an update, and Nappin Webster, this is something that I forgot, it didn't dawn me at the time, Nappin Webster is running corporate and one in Ontario is privately owned, there's a franchise, I guess, we have better pricing out there, so that's why we go out there and we go to Webster if they don't have something. And that was for fifty nuts and, excuse me, fifty nuts and fifty bolts, they average sixty-four cents a piece. We confirm that. So, but no, that's, that's why, you know, there's, there's, you know, reasons, reasons why they do stuff and sometimes, you know, it didn't strike me as, it dawned on me at a great time, so, I know there's good reason, I just appeared once and, you know, I forget about it, but that's why, so that's more good stuff. I think that's it.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you, Jake. And Lancy?
Thank you, Lancy.
All right. Just mention here that our next board meeting is April fourteenth, followed by the twenty-eighth of April, and that will be a vote. Budget presentation will be on the fourteenth. At this particular point in time, I would like to ask for an executive session. The executive session is to enter in for the purpose of discussion related to the promotion of a particular employee and to discuss pending litigation. So, if I can have a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Abolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I do believe we will not be voting on anything for this meeting with that, so when we exit out of executive session, we will be that way closing the meeting. So, I would ask, since the small meeting room is not available at the moment, that the public please leave and we will use the board.
He's cooking, he's, he's all done, I'm sure it's another.
Okay, we are out of executive session and don't believe that there's anything else for us to have a discussion on. Again, I would reiterate the next board meeting is April fourteenth, there will be a general budget presentation. That's, and April twenty-eighth is the budget. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gary?
Very nice.
I know. Halt, Bob.